Mayor Protemore is not here yet. Councilman Blair?
Here.
Councilwoman Good?
Here.
Councilwoman Lamerson?
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl, here. Councilman Sishka?
Here. All right, let's do the pledge of allegiance. I'll lead out. All right. Mr. Woodfill, it's game time.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. It's the most exciting day of the year. It's the budget workshop. And as I've told you, this is the most important thing you'll do all year because it kind of directs the focus of the whole city for the next year. So just looking back at the process this year, excuse me, it all starts with the council's strategic plan. And of course, we met in January to take care of that. And from there, we started putting the budget together to achieve that strategic plan. A lot of deadlines happen between now and then, all through staff. And it brings us to today's workshop, and we have another one scheduled for next week if we want to do it again or get more information on anything. The budget presentation is going to be similar to last year. A week ago, we got the detailed departmental and fund budget out on the website, 202 pages, sent you all an email when that got out there, as well as 153 pages of capital projects and explanation of those projects has been out there for a week for the public and for council to review. So today, we are going to focus on an overall budget review over the initiatives that are achieved and the service levels that are maintained or improved in this budget and how they achieve the council's strategic plan. The capital presentation is going to be talking about functional area, not so much in particular road or this road or that road, but a functional area. And again, if questions still exist after this meeting from council, from staff, from the public, always staff, budget staff is available to meet with them so they can just call us. We'll be glad to sit down with any individuals, any groups, and explain the budget this year and answer any questions they have. So Prescott is a premier community of the Southwest. It, you know, it embodies our unique past and maximizes our current opportunities and is catalyst for future prosperity. Again, those are your vision and your mission, and that's what staff has put together with this budget is to continue those mission and vision as well as through the strategic plan that you guys have outlined. Just talking about the budget, the 2020 budget, in summary, it is a balanced budget. That means operating expenses are covered by current year revenues. We are not deficit spending for operations. One-time capital does use fund balance. Again, we have fund balance accumulated for these things. We're not here to save money or to accumulate large sums in the bank. We're here to do capital projects. So this budget contemplates that and budgets for those projects to get done. Sales tax revenue forecasting is always a challenge. I'm not just projecting the next year, the next five years. I got to project the next six months to start projecting the next 12 months because we're so far out as we do our budget. We do have good growth, looking at our forecast, 7% over the 19 budget. We'll get into the specifics of that in a slide or two. We have good state shared revenues increase this year, 5.7%. Big help in the general fund, one of those revenues. Highway user, however, remains flat, doesn't help our streets. Fortunately, we have the other source of funds for that. There is no proposed property tax increase in this budget. The only increase in property taxes related to new construction. This is the third year in a row that we are not bringing forward a property tax increase. The employees of the city, of course, are critical to our service level. We're a service-oriented organization, and council has made them a priority. And the market compensation plan is included in this budget. So we have continued that market compensation plan. That was, of course, started in fiscal year 17, July 1st of 16. In addition to it being funded in this year, we've also, based on discussion with departments, we have also included another class and comp study to make sure that we are still offering market-based pay for our employees. So that is included in this budget for 2020. And per council policy, the PSPRS ARC payment, your annual required contribution, is being funded out of the operating funds, the general fund. It is not being taken from the PSPRS dedicated tax. That tax is only being used for additional payments above our normal annual payments. We are not reducing our current year liability with that tax as we promised the voters and as council adopted in the policy. Positions in this year's budget, there are some positions. There are capital need, or service needs that have come about. There were 31 requests from the department for positions this year. These four and three-quarter positions deal with positions that actually have, are temporary positions that are working essentially full-time. Of course, law requires that they receive most of the benefits already, working full-time. There's just a few benefits they don't get, like PTO and holiday pay and those type of things. Is felt by the manager and staff that these things need to be cleaned up. If these are really permanent positions, they need to be acknowledged as permanent positions. So we've added these four and three-quarter positions. The total cost to add these positions was only $30,000 in this year's budget, but they are in there. Again, two airport operating, one fleet equipment operator, a stormwater specialist, a halftime secretary in the city manager's office, and a quarter of a utility billing specialist. In addition to that, there were four additional new positions added. Two police officers for community policing and one additional canine officer. Half of that will be paid for by PANT, local grants. Only half of that will be coming from the taxpayers of the city directly. There is also a solid equipment operator, which was part of our rate study. We need an additional residential route, and this position is to fund that route to continue that service pickup. Those four positions, of course, not being already doing the work, they have a significantly higher cost of $341,000. And again, please feel free to interrupt me if you have any questions. This is a graph you've seen before. We went ahead and included it. Yes, Mayor Protem?
So Mark, I think it's important to talk about the two police officers and $242,000. What else included in that besides their salary?
Well, all their benefits costs and all the other costs associated with bringing them on.
Thank you.
Again, this is the graph of positions over time. We're down, we were at 570, we're at 507 with these new positions. Again, just a historic trend. Overall budget, total budget changes are on this slide. You can see we have an operating budget increase of 5.7%. We also have two other operating components, which I separated because they artificially increased that. Yes, sir?
Can I ask a question, Mark?
Yes, sir.
Relate that to the increase in our overall cost of doing business?
Well...
We're talking about an overall cost of increase of providing service, but we also have an overall cost of providing that service.
Yes. I mean, that's why our budget went up 5.7. I mean, we have the additional positions, but we also have increases in fuel costs and electric costs.
Okay. I think it's really important, when we sit here in public and we tell them, "We're going to charge you some more money," that they hear, "Here's why. Because the costs of providing this service includes this, this, and this."
Right.
Just sharing that with you. It's not that we want to just go out there and spend their money. We want to go out there and buy what's necessary for their safety.
Exactly. Very, very accurately put, Councilman. And that's why, you know, we're going to go over the strategic levels and that in a minute about what those things are. There, again, there were increases, as everybody knows, in gas prices this year, electric prices, water prices, even trash prices. All those things add to this level as well as the positions that we just talked about. The PSPRS tax is outlined there. Obviously, I took that out of the base because it artificially inflates that, as well as the grant contingency, which has moved around. We have a significant increase in our capital budget, which we're going to go over in some detail here. Yes, Councilman, did you have a question?
Well, when you get to the PSPRS slide, I will.
Well, let's get there. This is our PSPRS slide. I've given you a three-year trend here. Our ARC is the first section, the normal pension cost portion of, as well as unfunded liability. Again, those have, will, and will continue to come out of our operating funds. In addition to that, council has done additional payments, and we're projecting to do additional payments. So we've done $33 million before this year and another 12.8 this year. Now, keep in mind, we only have a portion of this, what that means to our actual liability. We had contributed $17 million to the PSPRS trust before the last actuarial period ended. When we got those reports, our unfunded liability moved from 64.4 million down to 69, which is essentially the amount of that additional payment that we sent in, 17 million, 86.4 to 69 million.
6.4.
So that increased our funding ratio from 30%, where we were only 30% funded, to 46.3% funded. So again, that was only with the first year. We're finishing up the next year of the cycle with another 12.7 being contributed above and beyond this cycle. So we'll see in December what that does to our unfunded liability. Of course, there's other factors that affect that, earnings, which has been challenging for PSPRS this year. Any actuarial changes, which they haven't discussed any of those yet, but they did change actuaries this year, which will kind of prove to be interesting as we get our new reports.
Okay, question. You're showing the PSPRS tax generated 18.723 million for fiscal year 18?
And 19.
And 19. So is that an overlap of like 18 months?
Yes. It's a projected 18-month period.
It still holds about a million dollars a month.
It does. It's actually, in the next slide, we'll talk about revenues in general, but sales tax activity is slightly above my projections, so it's actually a little bit more than a million a month.
So projecting out for fiscal year 20, you're looking at...
12.8, 5, 3, 9, 2.
12.8, which is about a 7% increase, which is pretty well in line with the state revenue overall increase?
Yeah.
Now, as we pay down our liability, then our normal pension and unfunded liability ARC will also decline?
Our unfunded liability will decline, not our, not our normal pension cost.
So that 3.2 million in fiscal 18, 19 compared to 1.3 in 20 is much more than 100 or 50% more. So does that mean that our normal pension cost is going down?
Our normal pension cost fluctuates with actuarial assumptions. The ARC, again, we talked about the dedicated taxes, 18 months. The ARC totals are, looking at these, the 18, 19 is actually 24 months because that was for the full year.
Okay. But I think we need to maintain our unfunded liability payment in addition to the tax revenue because as that unfunded liability continues to drop...
We are, we are funding our unfunded liability.
Yeah, we should maintain it from what our unfunded liability annual payment would be at the beginning of the tax collection period and not allow it to decline as we pay down our unfunded liability. Because that means we'll get to our endpoint faster.
And it also means there will not be funds available for new terminals or other capital projects council wants to do.
And that's what I think we should do.
And again, that, that's an option. Council can modify their pension policy if they really want to do that, but it, it will...
I mean, our policy has to be, do we get this paid down as quickly as possible and maintain that current funding and payment ratio in addition to taxes? Or do we allow the unfunded liability to decline, which will cause our unfunded liability component of the ARC to also go down, which then frees up more general fund money for other, other assignments?
Other projects, like police officers and other things. Yes, it is definitely a policy issue.
So Mark, we are paying the ARC?
Yes, we are paying the ARC.
As we have been.
We are, we are paying the ARC per the policy. We do that each year.
And that's what we said we would do when we passed 443.
Yes. And we are on track, looking at the revenues being collected to pay this off well within the 10 years.
We have to define which ARC are we going to consider our benchmark number?
The ARC is defined by the...
By PSPRS.
PSPRS.
Right. So as we pay down our unfunded liability, our ARC, our unfunded liability component of the ARC will also go down.
Correct. But that's the ARC, the annual required contribution.
If we hold on to the original ARC when the tax was enacted and then add our taxes, we'll pay down our unfunded liability more rapidly than if we continue to lower that payment as our unfunded liability component of the ARC continues to decline. So the question is, do we pay it off quickly or do we allow that to decline and then extend our payments out for additional years?
And again, that's like definitely a policy decision because the point of, part of the point of 443 was to be able to maintain city service levels through this and to be able to make the city what the citizens and the groups wanted, which were included capital things like new terminals and...
So Mark, this is not 12 months compared to 12 months. So FY '20 is 12 months that you have up here, but the first column is, is more than 12 months?
Yes, the first column is 24 months. It's, yeah.
Okay. So it'd be interesting to see year over year, you know, what Councilman's talking about is, you know, in the previous fiscal year, fiscal year 19, it'd be interesting to see what was the ARC?
The, and again, that's, I understand, I understand the point for sure, but the, the issue that, that complicates it is pay rates change. So the dollar amount is, it's a percentage of pay. So keeping the percentage the same, keeping the total dollar the same, the ARC, the unfunded liability portion of our ARC, the 5.9, is approximately $950,000 less than it was last year, if that's the question. Again, it would have been more if we kept the percentage because pay rates went up, you know, employees have been here another year, that type of thing.
Well, for clarity, I think what Councilman Good is talking about is that we maintain a previous ARC from a previous year when we had more unfunded liability, you know, until this is paid down. And I think that is something the council can wrestle with. I think fundamentally, I'm for using general fund to pay down the ARC as it comes to us year over year. But let me ask you this, if we use the new tax, the 443 tax, are you still projecting that we're somewhere in seven, eight years going to have this paid off?
Yeah. Yes, the tax is coming in as projected. It's bringing down the liability as projected. It will, in my opinion, will achieve the goal of having it paid down to the desired level, definitely before the end of the 10 years. I'm thinking it'll probably be closer to eight.
So I think the existing policy that we all understand is that we're going to use general fund to pay down the ARC, whatever that ARC is, year, year by year, which it is going to go down because our unfunded liability goes down. And if we use 443 dedicated to pay off the unfunded liability, you're telling me in seven or eight years we'll be done with this?
Yes.
Mark, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
The unfunded liability, is that based on the state giving us 20 years to pay off the unfunded liability as it was a few years ago?
It was a closed period, so it's probably 18 years or 17 years.
Okay, 18 years now, but, but it was 20 years at one time. And that's what they figured our ARC on was they figured that that would, we would have 20 years to pay off that unfunded liability. So we're, we're doing that and we're not using 443 money to do that. We are actually doing that and then adding 443 money to it.
Correct.
Okay. Councilman Lamerson has a, I'm sorry, let, let's let Councilman Lamerson get in here.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. My memory serves me correctly, you know, we went to the voters. We asked the voters to pass a tax to pay off our liability. We told the voters, "We will use the tax to pay off the liability until it's paid off, and we will continue to pay our ARC." We are continuing to pay our ARC. I think we need to stay to what we told the voters we would do. I want every nickel that we collect on 443 to pay down our funded liability, unfunded liability. That's what we told the voters we would do. We will lose credibility with the voter if we don't follow that. That's what we asked them to do. They went over and they helped us out of the bucket, all right, to the tune of some $83 million or whatever it was at the time. And at the end of the day, we owe it to the voter to take the money they granted us and pay down that liability every year until it's gone. That's what we told them. We didn't tell them, "We'll figure out other games to play with the money."
Right. And I don't think that's up for debate at this point. We all agree on that. It's just whether you want to continue to pay the ARC, and it is going to drop year to year. And I'm comfortable with that myself because we're going to get this done in seven or eight years, and we are fulfilling our commitment to the public. Mayor Protem?
Oh, and I guess as I wanted to say, Mayor, is that we are paying, using 443 to pay down the unfunded liability, we're also paying the ARC as we had said that we would out of general fund. That we would not, that we would do that. And so basically, we are in, in some ways, double-stepping this thing. So I think Councilman Lamerson, we're doing exactly what we told the voters we would do.
And I agree with you in, in by calculation, if we do this the way we told the voters we would do it.
And that's what we're doing.
It's going to be paid off in somewhere between seven and eight years. That's the way it's going to work. That's what we told them. They said, "Go for it," and we did it.
Mark, is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, definitely.
And we're still paying the ARC out of the general fund.
Just as, as an aside, you're making annual decisions, right? I mean, in a year where you're not building a new terminal and you don't have to come up with $3 million, you can throw more money towards this above and beyond the payments you're making. So again, this isn't a ten and off, it's an annual decision you're making with this being the baseline. I think it's just important.
Mark, also, aren't you assuming that PSPRS will make its expected rate of return so that the systems under fund liability is not growing and consequently, our liability will be then paid down and reduced?
I'm assuming that their actuarials are correct. The, any, any lack of achievement of earnings will flow through the actuarial report and adjust in that annually. So for instance, this year, doubtful that they're going to achieve their 7.5% expected rate of return. The ARC that we get for the next cycle is going to include that in it. So the ARC would be higher than it would be if they had achieved that. So our ARC adjusts as those assumptions are missed or not. And the city manager's point is excellent, we're going to look at fund balance here. And in a year when there's surplus fund balance and council wants to...
Yeah.
Put more money in it like we did this last year, those are always annual budgeting options the council can make.
And that's a prudent way to go. Councilman Blair?
I think we're doing it right, just by what's on the board with the ARC and the extra money. That's what we said we were going to do. And let's not forget, we have other obligations to this community besides PSPRS, and one of them happens to be the airport. And for myself, I'm not willing to take an extra $3 million and put it in here when we know we need that over there. And we're doing exactly what we told our constituents we'd do. So I'm happy with the way it is.
Carry on, sir.
Carry on. Well, let's, let's look at the good news first. Revenues. Revenue growth is, is really strong this year, which is always good. We're projecting a 7.1% increase across the board in our sales tax, not in transient, and we'll get to that in a minute. That doesn't mean we're expecting the economy to grow, of course. We all know there's probably, we're close to another cycle adjustment on economic activity. But again, we're projecting for the end of the year. So if we take out the projection for the end of the year, which is well above our budget, we're only really projecting a 1 and 1.2% increase in sales tax activity next year. Obviously, that moves both the general fund, the streets fund, as well as the PSPRS dedicated tax fund, which brings it above our projections when we did 443, just by a little bit, which is better than below. Bed tax growth is not quite as strong, and that's because we projected that a little stronger last year than we did other revenues. We do a relatively complicated model on our sales tax projection, looking at all 20 areas of sales tax activity, projecting different growth rates for each of those. So that's why there is some fluctuation there. As I mentioned, property tax is only going up by the new construction component. Third year in a row, that means we have over 6% additional capacity there that council could take advantage of whenever they see a need. What does 6% on our property tax mean? About $109,000 a year, which is, is, is pretty good, not huge, but it is some capacity that is available if, if things present themselves. Intergovernmental revenues are all strong. That's our share of state income tax, our share of the state sales tax, as well as the vehicle license tax. HERF continues to be kind of an issue statewide. It's an issue at the legislature now as they debate budget. Bills, part of the problem, of course, is it's a per gallon tax as opposed to a percent tax, which as vehicles use less fuel and people travel less, it, it really impacts those funds. Our licensing and permits, as you can see, is up significantly, 27.8. A lot of that is tied to building activity, new building permits. You'll see a comparable increase in community development expenses on the next slide. Government service fees are up. That also relates to that primarily with plan reviews, again, relating to building, as well as some increases in our dispatch, our regional dispatch billings. Utilities, we have a significant increase there. As council is painfully aware, we went through significant rate studies this year, and those are all performing as projected in those rate studies. The revenues are coming in as projected, but we do see an increase there. And included, and then included in that was the solid rate study. Airport service revenues, of course, are up because we have additional operations at the airport and, and those type of things. So that's all good. Golf course is relatively flat. Unfortunately, it speaks to the industry doing a good job out there, but again, it's a, it's a nationwide phenomenon on golf. Internal service funds, of course, are internal service funds. So the reason they're up is anticipated increased services, mainly related to our fleet. Our fleet is getting older as we had put off replacing vehicles. As the fleet gets older, you have more repairs, you have to buy more parts, that internal charges goes up. The other, other revenues deal primarily with interest earnings. Obviously, interest is coming back. We're, we're seeing some significant interest earnings. Our grants down there, a lot, most of those are, I think all of those are related to the airport, and there is a little bit of debt in this budget at $31.3 million. That's WIFA loans, one for wastewater, a new one for water, as well as some operating leases for our solid waste function for new trucks or replacement trucks. Looking, speaking of property taxes, I threw this slide in there, it wasn't in last year's, but everybody likes to look at it, compare ourselves with the drop in our rate with no new increase. We're going from .27 to .26, so our rate is actually falling this year. So that means for a $200,000 house, it'll be $52 a year compared to 560 if you were in the new central Yavapai, whatever they call themselves now.
Okay.
Thank you. Expenditures, that's of course, and again, we, we went to this citywide look instead of dragging you guys through each fund painfully. Looking at general governmental, you see a 3% increase. It's pretty typical of additional increases out there. The big increase in community development related to increased building activity, additional outsourcing or whatever to cover plan reviews and permitting is in there. Fire is up, related to some uniform replacements and other operational needs that need to be included, as well as some additional costs from the PRCC. Library is pretty flat, as you can see there. Police up, we add additional officers, so that's included in those numbers. Police up, we add additional officers, so that's included in those numbers, as well as some uniforms and other things with police. Public Works is up relatively significantly, three-point-seven million dollars. Again, it's a big department. We lump a lot of the areas here. Street maintenance material, patching material, outsourcing of, of lands, of right-of-way landscaping and things like that are all included in those increases there. Dumpster, additional monies for new dumpsters for solid waste, um, those type of things, as well as debt service increases. Obviously, you issue thirty-one million dollars in debt, your debt service goes up, so, um, a lot of that, all that is in Public Works. Recreation, um, is up. Various, it was kind of across the board, various things need to come up, some water things, some internal charges, those type of things. Regional dispatch is up, again, not too significantly there. The non-departmental is a kind of a catch-all, that's where the PSPRS tax goes, as well as, um, some general grants that are not really specific to a department. Airport operations are up, we saw their revenues up. Obviously, um, operations go up when you have more activity, additional people are needed, um, that kind of thing. And the bed tax fund was kind of up significantly, uh, thirty-seven-point-six percent. I actually added a slide we'll look at in just a minute to address that, um, so we can look more into why that went up so much. Capital, again, primarily Public Works, followed closely by Airport, um, and the rest of it is, uh, spread across, and we're gonna go into detail on all those capital projects. So looking at the bed tax fund, here's a comparison of the nineteen and the twenty bed tax. You can see there was some increase in just the sales and marketing area with additional contributions to the, uh, chamber for the, um, visitor center, as well as additional needs for advertising and those type of things. The tourism grants were allotted, another five thousand dollars. Whiskey Off-Road, council approved a contract, which had, uh, significantly more expense on it. Then there was the new airport, um, service media campaign that the bed tax helps with, as well as Prescott Frontier Days and additional money being requested there. We have also budgeted the full contingency, that line I'm bringing in, that two-hundred-and-twenty-nine, so that, uh, it's available for council if they, um, come up with projects during the year. We budgeted a hundred thousand last year, and as part of our reappropriation for fiscal nineteen, we'll be bringing back reappropriation, because council did spend more than that this year with, uh, various different contracts, and we'll bring those details when we bring that reappropriation. So again, that's just kind of a availability for council. Since it's an internal fund, some of the operating transfers that happen for these things, like event overtime, the support of the parking garage are at the bottom, uh, as well as the airport event, the Wings Out West, thank you, Robin. And also, this was part of the rate study we discussed with council, with solid waste, bottom item. The downtown courtesy cans are emptied every day by solid waste staff, um, drive around and do that. That's something that all the homeowners in Prescott were paying for, that during the discussions of the rate study, kind of thought bed tax was a better source of paying those fees, as opposed to our residents. So that is why you see a bigger increase in our, in our bed tax. Again, I've included the recreation capital on the bottom. Again, there's, there's some golf course things you'll see on the capital sheets that are gonna be coming from, um, bed tax this year, and last year we had some other things, including starting the design for lower goldwater and that in bed tax. Looking at fund balance, and Mayor, as you mentioned, this is probably, as we look at this each year, this is where you'd say, "Oh, you have a large unfunded balance, let's make an additional payment to PSPRS." Well, looking this year, uh, I, and again, I summarized some of these, so we didn't have a super wide spreadsheet for all of our funds, but general fund, obviously, uh, very important. The surplus I talked about, the operational surplus, one-point-eight in a year, um, revenues exceeding operating expenses. Obviously, we have eight-point-three million going for capital, definitely pulls it down, and we're gonna look at those capital, but there is a lot of capital needs that were brought forward. Looking at what is, what that eleven million, eleven-and-a-half million is allocated to, we have our operational policy, which is twenty percent of our operating fund. That's eight million dollars, as well as some long-term liabilities that we gotta cover out of that reserve at two-and-a-half, leaving an unassigned fund balance in the general fund of eight-hundred-and-nineteen dollars. So what does that unassigned mean? Well, it's unassigned, uh, yeah, it could be spent, council could spend into their reserves if they wanted to, not something I would financially recommend, and I would not really recommend spending any more of that eight-hundred-and-nineteen. You never know what unforeseen situation we might run into in the year, whether it's a sharper-than-expected economic downturn, whether it's cost overruns, which Robin's assured me won't happen on the terminal, but, um, there may always, it's always good to have that little surplus there. Our streets fund, again, we're budgeting to use the monies that have been accumulated there. Again, we're not here to accumulate funds, we're here to fix streets, so that's all being budgeted this year. And then water, wastewater, solid waste, I lumped together, a lot of capital there as well, as well as some debt issues, um, to, to get these things done, and then all the other fund balances are pulled together in the last slide. With that, I will turn it over to the manager to talk about the achievement of the strategic plan.
At this point, I'm gonna go through half a dozen slides to talk a little bit about your strategic plan for nineteen, and revisit it, and bring attention to what I think is a good news story, that we have stuck to the strategic plan, and we're making inroads in each of the categories. As you probably all remember, your strategic plan had four distinct goals, stabilize the general fund, economic development, improve the quality of life of the people that live and work here, and try to create a better service-oriented culture. I don't think I need to go into the definitions of what each of those is or are, I think you guys understand them, since you put them together. Talk a little bit about stabilizing the general fund already today. The biggest measure in that regard, and the most important measure, obviously, is the tremendous inroads we've already made in terms of paying down the PSPRS liability. As Mark alluded to earlier, about the amount of money, as you can see in eighteen, it was eighteen-point-six, fourteen-point-seven, and twelve-point-nine additional contributions for this three-year period of time are forty-six million dollars and change. Sorry, I used the word "change," Councilman Lamerson, but... I think that's significant progress in what's, will be a little over a thirty-six-month period of time.
Thank you for pointing that out. I mean, I think it's important for the people of the community to understand how far this council's gone, to address what we said we were gonna do if they graced us with the money to do it.
It's tremendous inroads, and, um, you know, a payoff in seven-and-a-half to eight years is probably as good as anybody could've hoped for. As Councilman Shishka alluded to, some of our ARC numbers are based on a twenty-year payout, we're doing it in less than half the time, as a worst-case scenario, and I think that's pretty strong in terms of stabilizing the general fund. Something that's not on these slides that goes along with the stabilization is, I've been very committed, and I hope you've seen that, that even though we have had the, um, foundation of the PSPRS 443 monies, we haven't gone crazy about adding bodies to this organization. We've tried to understand that, uh, the taxpayers or this community made a tremendous commitment, and we are trying to live in our means as much as humanly possible. Economic development, I think the, the biggest focus we've seen in this arena is in, at and around the airport. I think you could put this terminal project in the economic development goal pretty easily. This, uh, success we've had at the PRC has been unbelievable, and it's unprecedented for central air service, is what we've heard from our provider, SkyWest. Getting the commercial airlines in this community, the airport they deserve, is very important. As such, we're putting three-point-seven million coming from the general fund, but I also think it's important for the public to understand, we'll be leveraging thirteen million plus or minus in state, and we just got good news, I don't, Robin, I don't know if Tyler shared it with you, did you get a chance? That it appears a million dollars is in the state budget for our terminal, so we need to thank our legislative delegation, I think Noel Campbell kind of spearheaded that. A million bucks from the state, which is an unprecedented amount for this airport from the state of Arizona. So I think the takeaway for that is that the federal government and the state see what kind of work we're doing out there, and they're rewarding us financially. Robin and I met with the FAA about two weeks ago. They said they would be back to us in two weeks about how they're gonna get us the money, but I feel very confident that we are gonna get the money. So if this project comes in at or around the amount we think it is, our contribution won't be any more than that to build what I think is gonna be a very efficient and functioning and attractive airport. I think we've done a good job of marketing Prescott to new retailers, you've also seen some nice infill, I think some of you were out at the mall, um, which I think eighteen months to two years ago was a little bit of a dead zone, but there seems to be a lot of interest in even some infill. I think we should all be very proud of the work we've done, and also realize how attractive this community is for merchants. We've also tried to increase Prescott's visibility to CEOs and decision-makers, um, and venture capital high-tech firms. You see this demonstrated in our relationship with aviation. You also see it with the relationship we're building with the mine. The mayor and I had a very good conversation with the general manager of the mine to, um, encourage the mine to have more of a presence here. I don't mean a physical presence, I mean a presence in the community, and I think they're very willing to do that. Mayor's done a tremendous amount of outreach at CEO roundtables. I think the city of Prescott's decision-makers are meeting with the decision-makers in the private sector to see what we can do collaboratively to improve the economic development opportunities in this community. Did you have something you wanted to share, Mayor?
The Hilton Garden Inn, I think is definitely something. Where are you gonna get to that?
I was gonna, that's okay, you can jump ahead, you're the boss, right? Leverage city-owned facilities to encourage economic activity. I consider our park, Granite Creek Park, a city-owned facility and a parking lot. We're looking at a groundbreaking on that project in June. Stephen Shumway would like to do it the early part of June, and I think that's a great example of a public-private partnership. It's not just two parties, it's a city, a college, a farmer's market, a hotelier, it's a tremendous situation that we've developed, and also, I think it's good to pinpoint, um, we're leveraging our hangar space right now for aviation, is that not correct to you, Robin? So again, it's something we haven't really talked about, but they needed a place to begin their manufacturing and the reassembly of their prototype. They're gonna be doing that in a city-owned facility.
Mayor, if I could add, uh, Michael, I think also, huge shout-out to the chamber, and how much they have helped us in, in all of these endeavors, and with the mine, um, the CEO roundtable, Emory Riddle, Prescott College, Yavapai College, so all of it, it's really come together, and because of all the collaboration, so...
I can only speak to the anecdotal feedback I've gotten from folks in the private sector, but I know a lot of you are very plugged in. There is a sense, I believe, hopefully universally, but definitely the lion's share of people in this community that are in the private sector, that the city is interested in partnering with the private sector, and as much as we're a regulatory agency, us facilitating relationships between different folks in the private sector to come together has worked very well. Quality of life. In FY twenty, we're gonna outsource some right-of-way brush management to move more employees to street maintenance, I think that'll be good, and provide more effective street repairs. We are in the process of revising our water resource management approach and policies, you guys got a little taste of that with the HERF dishlet model and some of the work we're doing. The work we're doing on tweaking the rebate program to make it more effective. Next meeting, you will have Gary Woodard here to bring his modeling here. I think one of the quality of life, crucial elements of the quality of life is our water, and us having a better handle on the management of our water puts us in a better position to improve the quality of life of the residents of the community. As we alluded to a little earlier, the two additional police officers in the K-9 unit are gonna be for community policing and in a downtown presence. I think that gets back to quality of life, as Councilman Lamerson and I talked earlier today. For residents and visitors alike, you wanna provide a good downtown that feels safe to the people that come here. I think this will help with that. Plus, everybody likes the dog, so there's that. And I do think that having an additional K-9 for drug enforcement, and also for outreach, are two good things for the community. We continue to upgrade public safety information technology. In this day and age, your only good is your IT and your mobile computing. We're gonna be working this year on mobile computers and radio upgrades. These things don't come cheap, but they're part of doing business in this time and age. And, uh, I wanna give a shout-out to Public Works, as much it's, again, it's been a kind of inconvenience for having the streets torn up as much as they are in a lot of replaces, we had a ton of overdue projects, and we're playing catch-up, and you don't catch up in twelve months, you catch up in twenty-four and thirty-six months, but it's the right thing to do, 'cause it's projects that needed to be done. And I'm gonna jump, I guess, ahead and let Tyler talk a little bit more about the changeover from code enforcement to neighborhood services.
Thank you, Michael. We'll tie this in to quality of life as part of the strategic plan, this is a, a good example of it, I think, and, thank you. I won't read through the mission and method, but you understand it's, it's to keep neighborhoods clean and safe and provide that ability. We wanted to change it to neighborhood services from code enforcement to do just that, to focus on helping neighbors, helping neighborhoods. And we're mostly complaint-driven, we get calls or complaints, and then we go out and enforce those, and while we're out, we keep our eyes open for other violations of a similar nature in that neighborhood, so people are being treated fairly, and there's a consistent look and feel. The last year, in fiscal year nineteen, we hosted three neighborhood cleanups, and it was a year ago this time that we presented this to you, and it has, it's been wonderful, it's been really good to see. We've had great turnouts, great success from volunteers, uh, even city staff, the fire departments helped a lot, and it's been a neat, uh, team-building and, uh, neighborhood-building experience. We're gonna provide two more in fiscal year twenty. We're shooting for spring and fall events, that tends to draw more people out, good weather, good temperatures, things like that. In those, we provide tools, we work with volunteers from the community, and we organize the efforts to clean up the neighborhoods. We go out on foot, pick up trash and junk, bring it back. We allow people to come to a centralized location where we have roll-off bins to dump their trash, and then we provide two days of free loads, uh, I guess one free load over two days for each person, each household in the neighborhood, to our transfer station, which has been really helpful as well. And of course, we have the two code compliance inspectors now.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, I just wanna, uh, acknowledge all the work that you and Bren and the code enforcement officers have done in the last year. The neighborhood cleanups have been, uh, very well, um, attended, supported, the community has responded to that, and we're seeing some of our more challenging neighborhoods definitely being upgraded, and we're also seeing what we hoped to see, which was more investment of infill projects, both single-family and small, uh, multifamily, uh, developments occur because of those efforts. So I wanna acknowledge your, um, successful, um, teamwork in there, and, uh, I think we can expect that that will continue and, uh, improve our overall downtown core and the surrounding areas significantly, so thank you.
Thank you. And to build off of that, in FY nineteen, the cleanups, as you know, were in the Dexter neighborhood, as well as this past Saturday, May eighteenth, was our most recent cleanup, and it was, it was tied along with the Carlton Cortez project, but it really was expansive, and I'll show you a map on the next slide. The FY twenty cleanups would follow a similar pattern of following construction projects, and we've thrown out a few ideas there of what it could be, but it kind of depends on timing and needs and location, so we're gonna, we're gonna keep planning on that. And following the cleanups, code compliance goes back out to the neighborhoods and sweeps through it again, and, and enforces maybe what was left or untouched, and explains- left or untouched and explains that there's opportunities. The city's trying to help with these cleanups providing opportunities. So I'll show you a map here. We chose a pretty large area for our last cleanup. It's Park Avenue on the west side, Gurley on the north, Bradshaw on the east, and then kind of Copper Basin and Montezuma on the south. It was a lot of neighborhoods, really, in fact. And this last Saturday, we had 25 volunteers participate. The fire department came as well, which was neat. And then we collected between the roll-off bins and the transfer station 11.3 tons of junk, trash, and debris. In comparison, in the previous cleanups, the one in November collected eight and a half tons, and our first one in last July collected five tons. So it's growing. The word's getting out. We're becoming more efficient as we understand what people respond to and what's best. And we're going to continue to work on that. And other items of enforcement. As you know, the council recently created two sign-free zones downtown and near the airport, and we are actively enforcing that. We've picked up signs of all sorts and types, from selling mattresses to you name it, vacation rentals, sober living homes. We still have charge over that until the state fully takes that over. And of course, the news racks in the downtown business district, getting rid of those colorful bins in the business district, that's coming along. I spoke with our vendor, who we selected just this week, or last week, I should say, and he is estimating now, second week of June, having them delivered. So it's a couple of weeks further out than what we expected initially, but they're just around the corner to being here and being installed. So we're happy about that. And then I can cover this, Michael, unless you want to?
Yeah, I'll let you do most of this, Tyler. But one thing I wanted to allude to, in this year's budget, and I've shared this a little bit with you guys, is some pilot programs we're going to try with outsourcing. I've talked a little bit to you guys about development services and the ability to look at having outsourced engineers, outsourced plan review, outsourced development review and building inspection. My hope is that by having some assistance from the private sector while we're having this uptick in development, that we can manage the uptick without adding internal staff. Because as you know, when you add bodies to an organization like a local government, it's difficult to, when the economy inevitably goes down, it's hard to get rid of the bodies. It's hard to downsize the organization. So it serves a double purpose of looking at a private sector solution for some problems in terms of the volume of work. And also, when the inevitable downturn comes, you can just get rid of the private sector contracts. I think that's part of trying to experiment with utilizing the private sector to be more service-oriented as an organization.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, Michael, I just want to say thank you for that because I know when we did pass 443, one of the things that folks were saying is that we would use this money to increase staff. We have not done that. And I know that the urge has been there by lots of departments to ask for additional people because we have stabilized the general fund. But I just so appreciate it because we're keeping our word on that, and I think that we've been able to get this done in other ways, and that's due to your leaderships. I just, I really want to say thank you.
Well, and I appreciate that, Mayor Protem. And if outsourcing is successful, I think you'll see more of it. I know that some of you, I know Councilman Good has brought it up before, is something that he'd like to see us do more of. And I think development services is the kind of service that lends itself quite easily to experimenting with outsourced models. Go ahead, Tyler.
Thank you. Just adding on to that, there's a few other things that this budget is talking about in regards to service-oriented culture. One is provide training to supervisors to help develop their skills and then improve accountability for all employees. That's a trickle-down effect through the organization. Continuing the City Hall Ambassador concept, which has been really successful right now. Michelle's done a great job managing that. Right now, I think she only has a handful of slots even open. There's a lot of interest from volunteers to continue to do that for us. And then, of course, continuing the Citizens Academy. We just finished our third class a few weeks ago. They're going to be presented to you at the next council meeting. And we have a fourth class starting in August. So it's been really good, really successful, and people have enjoyed it. The feedback we've gotten has been overwhelmingly positive for that. And so we have budgeted for more classes to continue in this next fiscal year.
And I hear the dinners are quite good.
I think so.
Excuse me, Tyler.
Yeah.
My question on the Citizens Academy is, are there people coming into Citizens Academy who are somewhat suspect of local government? And what is their reaction once this process is over?
Absolutely. And I won't name names, but there's, I'll give you an example. It was our, I believe it's our first class. We had, we had a lady who joined the class and who told me personally, she thought the city was her enemy. And by the end of the class, eight weeks later, we sat down in the hallway right out here and just had a chat about the class. And she said, my entire opinion has changed. I realize we have a very professional council and staff. We do our best. We're not trying to pull the wool over on anybody's eyes. We're just doing what we should be doing, and that we're a well-managed city. And her perspective and opinion changed 180. But that was more of an exception than the rule. Most people come in either having participated in something like the Police Citizens Academy or something in another town from another state that they lived in, kind of knowing what to expect, or just already knowing that Prescott's a great city to live in, and they wanted to learn more about the basics and the essentials.
Tyler, in the three classes you've had, have you had a single person give a negative review on the way out?
Not about content.
You haven't shared one with me. Maybe you're just trying to protect me.
Honestly, and I keep track of all the feedback on a spreadsheet, even all the comments and everything. And there have been very few, if any, about content. I think they really appreciate the department heads. They love meeting the department heads and meeting the city council and having everyone involved. They find it neat to have that access and opinions directly from the source. And honestly, it's been overwhelmingly good.
And I think it's been really interesting to watch the staff showcase their departments and to see the pride that they have. And that to me, and they've all gone the extra mile. These are evening classes.
Three hours.
They've been working all day, and they come in the evening, and you as well. So it's been a huge effort for the city. But I will tell you, Tyler, I think it has paid just triple times what we've put into it. So thank you.
You're welcome. It pays off for sure.
I hear the finance director's always the favorite.
You're always the most popular.
But you do look relaxed now that you have your heavy hitter back. So you might want to introduce Jody to the rest of us.
Yes, for those of you who don't know, Jody Rhodes has come back to be our budget manager. She had, you know, left us for some reason, went to Texas for a few years, but has come back, so.
The dove has come back to the nest.
So as we look at capital, wanting to pull the airport out, obviously, I've spent a little time on it. And also look at the five-year plan at the airport. And that's actually the only area we really look at, five years, because there's a lot of planning with the airport. Capital projects for next year, the big one that we're all talking about, of course, is the airport terminal, as well as other components related to the airport terminal in this package. Big grants, hopefully. Robin's waiting to hear. We just heard about the state, the additional million. Still going to require significant money from the general fund, which is, again, why we need to accumulate some funds in the general fund to have it, to take advantage of these capital opportunities. Again, Robin's here. As we go through all this, all the department heads are here to talk about any specific questions on these capital sheets. And again, I throw the five-year up there. It's a lot of numbers. It's a lot of, lot of stuff. But just to kind of give you an idea that the need from the general fund is not limited to this year. There's going to be additional need in future years as we look at taxiway improvements and runway extensions and various other things. So that is something to keep in mind as we look at cash flows in the general fund. Any specific questions on airport capital? I mean, we talk about airport a lot, but like I say, Robin is here. If you'd like any, any additional.
She was here.
She was here.
Oh.
Would you guys like an update on where we think things are with the FAA? Would that be good at this point?
Yes, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark, for that. I didn't guarantee it wouldn't. No, I'm just kidding. About the budget. Okay, so an update. First of all, did everybody hear, we made 10,000 planements already this year as of yesterday, which is really great news. For the year, we expect to hit about 25,000 to 27,000 planements. That's 52,000 total passengers. We will move up in rankings in passenger counts from the 450th busiest airport to the 350th busiest airport this year. This will be the second year we've achieved primary commercial service status. We're considered a non-hub, which is a promotion, even though it's a non. And what that means, obviously, is now for the next two consecutive years, we're entitled to a million dollars in capital investment in our airport at our choice. We met with the FAA 10 days ago, and they said, we've done our part. They're putting all the numbers together. And we were meeting with them in Phoenix on the 29th, and we will get the package that we're going to have to move forward. We anticipate breaking ground September or October. We haven't got the phasing completely settled on the plan. We're in the final, we're going into construction documents now, and we'll be completed with those next month. So we'll know the phasing. But the groundbreaking is either September or October, and that's where we're looking at. We could do a civil followed by a building. We could also just do it all as one, but we're waiting to see the way the funding comes. Supplemental was announced last week. I had mentioned to some of you that there was a billion dollars available in supplemental. That's actually the first of six tranches of a billion dollars. Five were in the FAA reauthorization. We were not in that, that group of initial announcements. Coolidge and Holbrook got, I think, 14 or 15 million dollars. The neat part is when they got that money, then their allocation goes back into discretionary. So that's even more funds available for the other airports. We're very highly ranked in the state. We have every reason to believe that within the next two weeks, we should be able to make an announcement on the actual funding size and pots. The terminal cost is 15 million dollars, plus it's been about 890,000 dollars for the planning effort. 13.3 million of that is eligible for funding with the FAA. When we shared that with them 10 days ago, they said that seems in line with their expectations. So there isn't a surprise there.
So I think the takeaway from that is, this was the initial budgeted, we assumed, 8.8 from the FAA?
Yeah. And this one right here is actually, just as a reminder, this is FY 20. On the next slide, FY 21, you'll see that there's another 300, 3.5 million replacement airline terminal because it actually is going to bridge two years.
But what I think is important for you guys to know and for the public to know is our maximum amount has not changed.
Right.
The federal government is going to make up the difference. And they also said, and Robin, you deserve a lot of credit for this, a tremendous amount, in 30 years, who's the guy that came up here?
The, the Phoenix office at Airport District, Mike Williams.
Mike Williams said, in the 30 years of dealing with Prescott Regional Airport, we have never been as well-run and in such a good position to get the money that we're entitled to. So I think you guys should all be proud of that.
And our Woman of the Year.
Yes.
Does that mean you're going to stay at the city of Prescott?
Another two years, if you'll have me. So yes, this is, actually, if you combine together what's happening in FY 21, that taxiway Charlie realignment, which under the airport grant-funded project heading, it's the second item there for 12.1 million, that's actually 97.5% covered. That 12 million up there will come to the city with only a match of $300,000. And that's going to happen, the two projects together, the combined total of the two projects, including design, will be $29 million. And our share for both of those projects will be roughly $4 million. That's the 3.7 for the terminal and 300,000 for taxiway Charlie. That's a significant show of support from the federal government that will be implemented in the next 18 to 24 months.
Robin, I have a question. It shows in 2023 that for a runway extension of two and left, and taxiway delta, it's a million and a half dollars. Is that off of the end of the runway?
Okay, so that is actually the land acquisition part of it.
Uh huh.
There's also an environmental part, and then there's also the actual construction of the, of the item, the runway extension. You see up there for 40 million. So that's a combination of items.
Okay, but it's, it would actually be land at the, at the end of the runway.
That's correct.
Okay.
If we have to buy it.
Yes. Okay.
So we're, we're still looking at, even beyond the next two years, significant capital investment from the federal government. And now the state announcement was, was, was great to hear. We've been working that for a bit, and it was good to hear that they've come through. So it's possible the city's share may actually drop a little bit. But this is what we're moving forward with, is this plan.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Robin.
So looking at the other capital, again, all this 150-some pages of capital and backup is on the web for the public. And I know the council's already seen it, but it is out there with all the explanations if the public wants. We have a schedule here to kind of just kind of run through the different departments. Again, department heads are here if any particular questions come up. Recreation, this first slide is for recreation, both recreation and the golf course. Obviously, 1.8 million open space is still in the works. That's been extended into 2020. We were able, with this budget, to put some money towards the Lower Goldwater expansion, to bring that lake into production and let the citizens and the visitors use that, keep us a very attractive community. It's a two-year project. This would be the start of it. West Granite Creek Park, again, talking about the Hilton project, that's those improvements related to that. Some fencing, some vehicle replacement that they need. The Peavine to Glassford Hill Trail Connector, big, big issue there. Again, that's a grant. The explanation of funding is, there's a key at the bottom of these slides. On the golf course, irrigation system consultant to look at what the needs are there. Some cart path pavings coming from Bed Tax, golf course equipment replacements, tee boxes, again, from Bed Tax, and some operational equipment and restaurant equipment. Community development and facilities maintenance, I only had two projects in each of these, so I put them together. The roof and City Hall leaks, again, they're, so it's up to be replaced in 2020. I think that's the third roof I've had, seen them put on this building, but I've been here too long. Or they're not doing roofs very well. Community Development Block Grant, of course, is a project. Fire, we have a equipment replacement, a new truck that was, actually, two trucks that take a while to build. That's a carryover. Some continued design on the improvements out at the drill grounds, mobile data terminal replacements, which the manager alluded to, as well as a skid unit for one of the apparatus, and a records management system. Police has some significant vehicle replacements. A lot of vehicles were put off in the very tight times, and they're in dire need. So we need to get those replacements caught up. Those, again, will come to council individually over the year. The radio replacement, all the radios is a two-year project, looking at police this year. Fire would be in 2021. Some facility improvements, some start-up design, that includes some of the impact fees. And then some laser crime, crime scene imager that the chief really wants. With that, we'll go on, yes?
Mark, can you, how many vehicles are we talking about, replacement for police?
I believe that's six vehicles, eight? Six? Six or eight?
Great, thank you.
I can get you the list if you'd like it. It's a variety of different vehicles. Last area in this general overview before we get to Public Works, which of course is the big-ticket capital stuff, is our regional communication center. Of course, these are packages that are partially shared, in most cases, with our partners. So that's 490. I think several of those are carryovers. The bottom there is where the funding for all these capital is coming from that we've talked about, general fund, streets, grants, and so on. With that, we will go to Public Works and let Craig take us through that section.
We've got a few things to go over, but I don't think it should take us more than a couple hours. Definitely, we have a lot of projects in Public Works. We have broken down into our primary service areas. We'll start with streets and the types of projects that we do in We'll start with streets and the types of projects that we do in streets and, and kind of why we're doing each of those types. So with streets projects, and we have the, our category of maintenance, preservation, rehabilitation, that is some of the projects where we're, we're doing the, the small items, the rejuvenators, chip seals, crack sealing that you've seen going on lately in there, as well as then, like Willow Creek Road, we did the mill and overlay in two different segments in the last year. And we have circulation projects, so that's going to be new roadways, new sidewalks. We also put in there, like Safe Routes to Schools comes into that. Then we have the major roadway reconstruction projects, like we're currently doing on Carlton Cortez, East Goodwin, South Washington, as well as Summit McCormick Beach and Goodwin coming up soon. Then drainage projects. And Tuesday, we had the drainage project in Yavapi Hills. So individual areas where we identify there's problems that are, are causing property damage and/or infrastructure damage, as well as then drainage improvements. Like on Carlton, there was no drainage system between Mile High Middle School, the creek, and the intersection of Cortez. So now we've installed drainage in that. So in preservation, rehabilitation, maintenance projects, so that includes, so we have the, preservation, rehabilitation is the main item, and that's eight-point-five million of this, eight-point-six-six, eight-point-nine-six-nine-three-zero-eight of that. The, the other four-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand is a miscellaneous category where we have some other smaller streets, maintenance projects in there, and/or there's also some reserve for some unforeseen that could come up. If we're doing a, just a basic utility project, and we have a streets component come up, then we have a reserve to take care of that. This, the eight-point-five million is a significant increase from what we've done in the past. This is coming from our IMS laser evaluation that we've completed on all our streets, and the, the final report for that will be due into us before the end of this fiscal year. And then we will use that report to guide us on how we utilize that eight-point-five million, so that we're using the right dollars for the right method at the right time in the right place. On, these are just some pictures on the far right there, Willow Creek Road. Yes, sir.
You going to use that same theory with the sidewalk replacement as well?
Sidewalk replacement-
I mean, you're talking about the laser that you have done with the roads and how to evaluate those. Are you doing the same with the sidewalks?
Little different process. Right now, just recently, we've had company out there. We actually were addressing five-hundred-and-seventy-eight trip hazards that we identified through evaluation of the sidewalks. So we brought in a company that was doing concrete cutting and/or grinding to eliminate those trip hazards in a very efficient, cheap manner versus, you know, remove and replace.
Who's doing like, I know this is not budget talk, but like on Moller and, and Pleasant Street, the curb replacements and the handicap?
That, that is-
That's that company?
That is a separate, another contract that we have out there for sidewalk replacements. When they were beyond the ability for us to do that, that minor repair for those trip hazards, as well as then meeting the ADA requirements for those ramps. So that's another contract that we have out.
Is part of that contract for them to clean up after themselves?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, that is their, at-
Yeah, at Moller and Pleasant, it's a mess.
Yeah, that's their, kind of their construction staging yard that they have leased from a private property owner that they're using there. But be, be happy if you have additional information, be happy to touch base with you on it.
Other than the fact that the property owner didn't know that they were going to do what they did to the lot, so the sooner they can get it cleaned up, the less phone calls I receive.
Okay. Next then would be street circulation projects. In here, we have the Corsair Extension, actually exhibit there in the center. So we are between sixty, around sixty percent design on that project. We've received a five-hundred-thousand-dollar state grant to help support that project. The lime green is the, the route that's being designed. Negotiations are going on with property owners in regards to right-of-way and/or our easement acquisitions, and that'll be moving forward this, this fall. Also with that, we will do rehabilitation on Wilkinson Drive from the New Corsair Roundabout down to the Larry Caldwell Interchange, because that's also in very poor condition. Safe Routes to Schools in here. Left-hand picture is the alley by Mile High Middle School, and ADOT's next, or the last piece of Safe Routes, Safe Routes to Schools bids on Friday. ADOT will open those bids, and that will be up on Coronado from Park Avenue up to Country Club.
Craig, what's the expected finish for Corsair?
Corsair, we expect to be out to bid late summer, and then that should, no more than a six-month construction project.
All right, thank you.
And then this category also includes signalization projects, like Prescal Lake Parkway, Willow Lake Road that's under construction right now. Roadway reconstruction, this is total reconstruction like we're doing right now out here in front of City Hall and on, on Carlton. So in FY twenty, we will complete Robinson Drive, South Washington, East Goodwin. Look at bidding and beginning on Penn Eastwood. Summit Beach, McCormick, and Goodwin, pre-bid was this afternoon, and we'll bring that to council either on the eleventh or twenty-fifth. Hope Street also, and then Overland Trail Bridge is another grant that ADOT is administering, and city's portion on that is around two-hundred thousand, and the grant is another million that we got there. Drainage projects. So we have citywide drainage improvement programs, so that's the projects like we're doing in Yavapai Hills. The floodplain mapping are places where our staff has identified the FEMA map elevations are incorrect. So then it's negatively impacting the ability for development on parcels or what they have to do on them. So this is in order to zero in on these places where we've found those elevations to be incorrect and go to FEMA and get them corrected for everyone's benefit. And then this Willow Creek Birm project is to evaluate the berm in between the bridge by the Dairy Queen on Willow Creek Road, going upstream on Willow Creek, because the, the berm was originally a levee and has been de-certified because a levee's not supposed to have a bunch of holes poked in it. So this will evaluate that and identify how it can be corrected, again, to alter flooding potential in that area, and then that will make changes to flood insurance and such for our homeowners. Water projects. So we list, break it down into water production, water distribution, and then water quality. Water quality definitely doesn't necessarily link in with, with our, our domestic water, but it's someplace to, to put it here to, to talk about it. Production deals with pump stations, tanks, and wells. Distribution then is all, all the other lines around, around the city and including the meter services. That's how we kind of break that down. So some of the production, production product, projects, here we go, that are going on, or largest projects, the intermediate and Chino Pump Station. That combined project alone ultimately will be twenty-five to twenty-seven million. We have about thirteen million included in FY twenty for that. We're currently reviewing thirty percent plans on it. Zone sixteen is the project that's been going on the south side of town, has had Hazely Road closed up, so that will continue going throughout FY twenty. Zone forty-one, same type of components, like the zone sixteen with tank, pump station, and piping. Zone forty-one will replace the two green tanks on top of, by Mingus, the Mingus tanks, we call them, up above Willow Creek Road. So that's, that design is above sixty percent currently. Zone fifty-six and seven is out in the area of Lowe's, be a new tank on the hill above York Motors, as well as new pump station right in behind York Motors to replace the one that's across from Coca-Cola currently. Production Well Four, that is rehabilitation of our existing well out there, and that's under construction right now. And Production Well Five, we've completed drilling, and they are working on scope and fee for the outfitting of that well later in FY twenty. And then the SCADA project is, is well underway, making very good progress and should be finished up in FY twenty. Distribution, small main projects that are being done this year are over in Par Keen Mile High Area off of Gale Gardner. Zone twenty-four, twenty-seven Pipeline is, was just out to bid. We opened, and those are being evaluated to bring forward to you. That is up in the Thumbute area, actually gonna bore through solid rock about nine-hundred feet between two different streets in order to create a, a new connection. Sundog Ranch Road, upsizing the existing waterline from the Yavapi Connector to Prescal Lake Parkway, as well as then pavement repairs in there with that. Gurley McCormick Streets, there's waterline replacements ongoing right now. And then Summit McCormick Beach will go with that road project. Again, that will come forward in June for construction award. And then Penn Avenue Eastwood later on in FY twenty.
And Craig, completion on, so the Summit McCormick, you're saying that's going to start in June?
No, we will, we will bring it forward to you all for consideration in, in June, and then it would start at about the end of the Gurley McCormick project.
Okay.
Yeah, Gurley McCormick will be done about mid-July.
I was just thinking Fourth of July and all that stuff.
Yeah, no, no, it's all, we've got them all staggered around that. And then we also, for instance, like Carlton Cortez here, we had specific requirements in there that, for instance, on Cortez, that they could not remove all the asphalt until they're ready to go into the paving process. That's why we've just done the utility cuts and/or they cut by the curb and gutter in order to keep it in some, what, of a better fashion to use it during construction. Water quality projects. This funding will complete the TMDL study and the master plan. That will be coming to us by the end of the year, but then we'll have carryover into twenty to pay out the contract, as well as then that is proposing to use the two-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand that is generated from the Aqua, Aqua for Protection Fee annually in order to initiate some of the items that the master plan identifies for improving either the, the waterway or the lake in regards to the impaired waterway classification. Some of these pictures here, the one on the left is, is a device, brand-new, fresh and clean. Then that's the same device in the middle after it's done its job. It definitely shows some of the nasty that, that it picks up and keeps out of our waterways by us including these into projects. Wastewater projects. We have wastewater collection and wastewater treatment. Wastewater collection then is everything out in the system, from the homes to get it all the way to the treatment plants. Then we get inside of the fence, and then that's on the treatment side. There are no budgeted projects for treatment in FY twenty. All, all under collections. With that, we have the Sundog Trunk Main B and C. So Phase B would be down the highway from Prescal Lake Parkway to the VA. Phase C would then go from the VA over to Miller Valley Road in there to upsize that, the, the trunk main, and it will be upsize then for build-out conditions. So everything that we've done through the water wastewater models, when we build it now, we consider that it will be there a hundred years from now, taking care of the city. Along those lines, kind of the unfortunate thing is, when we do this project, it will be the fourth time that that trunk main has been built or worked on since nineteen thirty-four. So we would, that's where, we feel that the modeling is laying it out, so what we build will be correct and take care of things going forward. Airport trunk main, same thing. It, bottom-left picture there, that happens to be our brand-new forty-eight-inch trunk main going into the airport. That, it's quite a, quite a structure when it's complete in there. Also SCADA, associated with the water, is going on, continues very well, will be complete in twenty. And centralization goes towards the SR eighty-nine lift station, which will be the station by the VA that will send the wastewater flows north in, in the new Phase B pipeline. And then the Willow Creek Gravity Sewer will begin design on the, replacing a regional lift station and force main out along Willow Lake Road with new gravity and reduce the number of facilities out, out there. Okay?
So just to kind of recap the, the different areas that Craig talked about, we have our totals here. And again, this is all just because I'm an accountant, and it's all got a tie. There's a few projects under the other. Obviously, a lot of vehicles in Public Works between trash trucks and various dump trucks and backhoes and all that. So we have vehicle replacements, three-point-one. Again, those all come to council individually throughout the year. We have several miscellaneous projects which, which deal with different things at the yard and, and other things. Radio infrastructure project, city manager alluded to this during his slides. We have radio infrastructure in the city that isn't optimal. Nate, our head of IT, has worked very hard this year to come up with a plan to fix this for not only our public safety, but also for our public works and other projects, so that we have a good, reliable infrastructure for our radio system. So that project is in this budget as well. And of course, the wonderful Lassala Program, we're replacing that up in the building area to, to be able to better serve our customers with a Central Square project. That is part of this budget as well. That whole item will be coming to council next week, actually, for individual consideration. So with that, that's the total of the eighty-two-point-four, which is Public Works. The upcoming process, again, we had today's workshop, this, we're having today's workshop. We have scheduled for next week, if there's any individual area, council would like us to bring back more detail on for the group as a whole. Also, we are available to meet individually with council or the public or any other public group. We're always willing to go out and do presentations to other community groups to educate them, inform them, and get their response to our budget and our budget process. So that's available, it's all on our website. And again, I'd look to council to see if, if there is something you want to cover next week. Either way, we're looking to bring the tentative budget to council on the eleventh of June. That will then publish that in the paper. And then on the twenty-fifth of June, we would bring the final budget with hearings for that, as well as expenditure limitation, followed by adoption, then property tax being considered on the ninth of July. With that, I have nothing else for today, just look for direction on what council wants to do moving forward. Any thoughts on another workshop? Excuse me, I have a call today. I forgot to mention, by the way, we have the birthday boy down here.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
We forgot to sing "Happy Birthday." I don't think you want us to sing "Happy Birthday" to you. Yeah, yeah, okay. Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, I don't have any questions. I think what you presented is, is very, very acceptable, and I appreciate the city manager, and I appreciate the staff and all the department heads. I mean, this is pretty lean, it's, it's one of the best I've seen. Been here a long time. This, this is really a good, a good proposal, and I want to thank everybody that works for the city for bringing something like this forward. Shows a lot of dedication, a lot of hard work.
Thank you.
Well, I would say ditto to that.
Any other comments?
I only have one. This happened- This happens so fast, an hour and a half fast, which is good for me, but I'd like to have some time to digest this, and we can get back with you later this week for anything.
Absolutely. Again, any council or any public listening, please give us a call.
Just want to make sure there's not hidden airplanes or something in here.
Councilman Good?
More documents online.
Mark, you mentioned the change of these four-and-three-quarter temporary positions to permanent.
Yes.
The change in cost, you mentioned paid time off and holiday pay and some others. What are the others?
Mainly those are the additional changes. There is, was a slight, the thirty thousand actually comes from, some were not quite full-time, I mean, they were really close to full-time. That's the only other benefits they don't already get. They already get health insurance by law. They already get retirement by law, so then they get sick pay by law as well.
So the only additional thing is the PTO and the holidays. And what about vesting and pensions?
They already are eligible for all those.
So they'll get vesting even if they were to maintain temporary status for multiple years?
Vesting has to do with how long you're in the pension, so that, they're in the pension as soon as they work more than twenty hours a week regularly. And they're, these are not public safety employees, they're in Arizona State Retirement.
Any public comment? All right, good job, Mark.
So go ahead and council next week?
I'm assuming we're not going to do another workshop, but we'll see if there are questions from the council that come up after they go through the packet.
Sure. Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.